Okay, we're ready.
Ready.
Okay, all right. Jennifer's back. Okay, so eight oh seven, the regional school committee is back in session. So is there anyone that would like to, first up is public comment, is there anyone that would like to make public comment?
Let's try this. How about that? Yes, hi. Good evening, thank you. I'm Irene LaRoche, I teach at the middle school and I am the A P E A vice president. I have a statement to read, but I just wanted to say that it's come to the A P A's attention that at least one member of the press received the anonymous letter containing a personal attack as well as confidential information with A P E A written on the return address section of an envelope and I want to address the public to say that, and you, the committee, to say that this did not come from the A P E A. I want that to be crystal clear. Okay. The Amherst Pelham Education Association strongly condemns the way in which anonymous criticisms were recently levied against ARP Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Zia Mara Herman and her administration, as well as the harmful actions taken against one of the district employees by exposing confidential, personal information to the press, some Amherst residents and the school committee. The A P A expressed deep concern about the leakage of confidential employee information, which they say undermines the trust and safety of the district community. Such an action, the union affirms, is not only inappropriate but goes against the values of respect, humanity, and professionalism that it espouses as educators. Apologies, I'm reading our press release. Okay. In a statement, we affirm, we as our educators, we teach students to resolve conflicts through understanding, dialogue, and cooperation. We do not teach them to respond with hate or harm. As adults and professionals, we must strive to be examples for our students, showing them that disagreement does not need to escalate into personal attacks or division. It is appalling that someone within our own community has resorted to these low tactics. We further want to recognize something that has already been discussed tonight, which is that there are previous administrations for which Dr. Z is having to establish new systems, policies, procedures, relationships, and we've appreciated all of that effort. And we need, and to approach things with a step forward and, and leading with love, I think is what Dr. Z has said, and I, that has been my personal experience, I'm gonna say. But also, it's been my experience as part of the union supporting our employees. I'm sorry, I went off script, okay. So we further acknowledge that while disagreements with school administrations of the past have occurred, the organization has strived to work through them constructively with the goal of ensuring the best possible outcomes for members and students. The A P A is resolving to continue to engage with the administration to work on differences in a way that promotes the well-being of all, and we appreciate that you are also engaged in that work. So, thank you.
Irene, will you email me a copy of that so I can put it on the minutes?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Mitchell and I'm just here tonight to speak on behalf of a resolution that's gonna come up later in the evening regarding charter school funding reform. And I won't get into the details now in interest of time and in my own ability to keep all the details manageable, but I just wanna say that this petition that, that was started by Mass Promise to Invest and that we've been circulating in Amherst as of today, it has a hundred and seventy-six signatures. Changing the way that charter schools are funded in the state of Massachusetts is really only, one of the only things that is gonna bring meaningful funding changes to the Amherst and Amherst regional schools. There are many other funding reforms that people are looking at, and I'm sure as you are very familiar, very few of them actually would bring relief to the, to these districts. And so I hope that you will seriously take a look at it and consider supporting it, a lot of our surrounding towns already have, and we have a meeting later this month with Senator Comerford to look at it again, and hoping that she or one of her colleagues will take this up and that the legislature will really take it seriously and move forward, and with every community and school committee and town council that will support it, those, that's the way that the organization is hoping to really show support, so you voting in favor of this would be one more step toward bringing some meaningful funding, much needed, to our district, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay. I did not receive any emails or phone calls. Okay. So, the chair's update, I wanted to, I, I had attached it to the agenda, but our representatives and senators wrote a letter in favor of the M S B A, the Massachusetts Building Authority, School Building Authority, in favor of accepting our middle school roof repair request. So I just wanted to say thank you to them, because a middle screw roof would be really great. Okay. Are there any school committee updates or announcements? Nope, okay. I did not attach any minutes, warrants?
Yes. Yes. Can I just discuss what we were gonna, can I discuss it? Okay.
While we prepare.
So, it appears that after going to our M A S C conference, that we are not handling the warrants totally correctly. So we're going to be updating how we handle them. What is going to be happening going forward, hopefully relatively soon, it may take a little while, I'm not sure. When I receive the warrants, all school committee members will receive them. At that time, it'll only require my signature, but everyone will receive them. We will not be reading them, but the, the front page will all be posted on all the agendas. So we're going to go back and start posting, hopefully at the next meeting, and we're gonna start with July one and post going forward. So you will be noticing hopefully shortly in your emails that you'll have access to them, I'm not quite sure how they will come to you, they come to me in like a dot loop signature kinda thing. But everyone will be receiving them, I will only be signing them, or the appointed person will be signing them. And then we will not be reading them at meetings anymore, but they will be posted on the agenda. So, I would like to just not read them tonight so we can move on, and they will be posted in the batch going forward. Okay? So we're gonna move on.
I think we need to turn that off.
I, I need to turn that off.
I think so.
It takes once.
Yep.
Can I turn it off? No? I think I turned it off.
It's warming up.
It's green. It's coming.
The blue light, yeah, there it is. It's blinking.
I did attach it in. Okay, so I will zoom through the first two so that we can get through the evening and just talk about them, so we're gonna do superintendent's updates. It's gonna be a little different this evening because it's mostly gonna be talking points, and I wanted to be very mindful of our time. So, as always, you know, our three priorities, but I kinda wanted to go into this evening. You completed us a lot. All right. So, let's start off River Valley Services. I know there's a concern, however, River Valley has, we have worked out an agreement until the end of November, we are in finalizing an agreement to carry us through the rest of the school year, so we were able to enter that temporary agreement so that we can move forward. Services actually resumes last week. Last week? So, last week, and so during this time, we will not be issuing any referrals or it'll be, while we work through this, but we are finalizing for the rest of the school year. What that also means is that as a body, we have to look at how things happen legally and what are our liabilities, and so we're working through that with the attorneys to make sure. For example, should we, should we be providing referrals as a school, is that within our capacity to determine if a child needs mental health services, or should we be providing a list of providers? What does that truly look like for us? What are the things that we, so we're walking through that with the attorneys right now, but services, we have come to a temporary agreement and services have started from since last week. So I'm hoping that everyone is receiving their services, now I wanna clarify, we did not stop services to students. We just said they could not happen in our buildings until we were clear on what those liabilities were. So, parents could have still scheduled with their providers, I think a part of it was the convenience of not having to drive them somewhere. But I was also told that providers were providing telehealth options. So, but services have been restored from since last week. Budget process, I know that's a standing update, I want everyone to know that we are in the process of preparing for our next four towns meeting, the tentative date is December fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. And so what we have been doing as a district team is we've been line iteming all of the divisions and meeting with those divisions to determine what their actuals were in F Y twenty-four, where they are in spending in F Y twenty-five, and what do they project for F Y twenty-six. We're then going to, our goal is to pull that completely together and kinda take that out and determine what it takes to run all of the divisions. What are our projections based on our projected cut, so that as we prepare, and we are looking, I think, at the four towns meeting, the consensus was scenarios one and two. What that would actually look like for us as a region to function. I want to say that the team and I are actually looking at the cost of running as we are versus the cost of seven twelve versus, like, just so that, again, now we have what are our possible funding scenarios, it would be what are our possible programmatic scenarios to fund it, so that's why we're going through division by division now and outlining the costs of what was spent to determine what are the actual programmatic options or scenarios we would have to function within the two. The data breach investigation, that's what I'm calling it, I'm not calling it anonymous letter. We have met through our attorney, Mark Terry, he was able to align us with one of his partners. It is considered a data breach, what was done, it is illegal. We have been working one through Amherst P D, we were able to file our police report and we will be launching an internal investigation. I also want you to just get some quick points around this. One, the district has a reporting obligation, which we met when we filed the police report on November fifth. Two, we are required to send formal notification to the impacted employee of the data breach, and a copy of this letter needs to be sent to law enforcement, as well as the fact that it's gonna go to the A G and Under Secretary of Consumer Affairs and Business. This, we have to also notify the A G and Under Secretary of Consumer Affairs and Business of the data breach that occurred, and we have to give them copies of all the letters that we have sent out. The school district should have a written information security program policy, a WISP policy, which we do not have. This policy is to ensure the security and confidentiality of personal information and to protect against unauthorized access or use of that information. We're gonna work with the attorney to create an initial draft for our district based on our policies in lieu of the committee having a policy. The superintendent can enact such policies and guidelines until one is adopted, and due to the importance of this, I can't wait for the committee to do such, so I will work with the attorney to, to, to work with it and keep the committees in abreast so that they would at least have a starting point procedurally to, to create the WISP policy. Note that when we write to the A G and Under Secretary, we do have to state that we do not have this policy in place and we are working to create one. It usually comes with a certain timeline, I don't have that in my notes right now, and that's why we cannot wait for our usual policy process. Because they will come Because they will come back probably within, I was told, the most like ninety, but thirty, depending on it, thirty to ninety days to ask us for an update, where are we with the policy and all of those things. So, I wanna make sure that we are in compliance, since we are not in compliance right now. That will require training and documentation to go out to all staff. That will require for us to update and other things to protect against, again, anything like this happening forward. The policy should include language that the district reserves the right to impose disciplinary action up to termination against those who violate the WISP policy. The district is required to offer eighteen months of complimentary credit monitoring for the affected employee. That employee is also, is going to be notified that they have to institute a credit freeze from this time that is going to impact their livelihood. We can face legal ramifications from that employee, thus they choose from, because we have impacted their personal life through the release of their personal information. We've received this information and guidance on all letters. Note that we also had to reach out and notify individuals who received the confidential information and confirm that they did not make a copy of that information that was sent out today. I signed the letters and our HR director sent it out. We've already begun to receive confirmations around the confidential information. All of this has to be shared with the AG and the Under Secretary's office. And we, I think today we received, we received confirmation from the credit monitoring company as to the cost to the district. And so we are then able by tomorrow, I believe the latest Thursday, to meet with the affected employee, present them with the letter as well as the information around what their next steps are. And so that is the update on the data breach investigation. And what's going to come forth to the district and the committees in terms of cost. For middle school principal search, we've started the search, we have applicants. And so the search process will begin, we have, I have charged Director Ortiz with this process. And so she, we, I reached out to different individuals and stakeholders to make sure that they are able to attend and we have representatives, so that is moving forward. Next week is American Education Week, that is sponsored by the National Education Association. And as a part of that week, there are different things that the central office will be putting forward. Some of the schools will also be taking part, we asked them today for their calendar events. One of the things that we're sponsoring is superintendent for the day. And so today, we sent out for the students to sign up and apply to be superintendent for the day. So there will be one superintendent for Amherst, one for Pelham and one for the region. And they all get to play me for the day, that's next Thursday. And so that's very exciting for me to share that with students and give them the opportunity to see what it takes to run a district. In terms of the entry plan process and next steps, my goal, and I realize that this is our last region meeting, so I would like to say that for November. I'll be back. I'll be back. I would say in the past week, I did get a lot of concern texts like, are you coming back? Yes, I am. And so for November, and so I will release the entry plan findings by the end of November with the plan to present it at each committee meeting in December. And so I believe the first region meeting is the first week of December, I think third, second? Okay, whoever. So I, I just know it'll be a repeat for each district. Could you keep still? In terms of that. But, one of the things that I wanna say is key findings in teaching and learning, key findings in, you know, what's happening in operations. And then I wanted to jump into something that has been an update. As you know, I did ask for a company, Markham came in and did an internal audit of our processes, especially in the budget office. So the first thing that they did was payroll, okay, now we can switch to the next one. And so we have some initial findings, and this is a draft. It is for discussion only, but it is a draft. So even though we're gonna go through some of the key findings, I did wanna show and share with the committee some of the things that they have brought forth. And so, there are some high risk, we don't have any low risk at this point in terms of our payroll process. It's high risk and moderate risk. One of the first things that's considered high risk is the fact that we have manual processes. Our, our systems don't speak to each other. ASAP, Veritime and Munis don't speak. And so one of the key recommendations is the fact that we need to find one aligned program. I believe that there are actually modules in Munis that we do not use. They're also talking about the tight turnaround time because of when the, because of when payroll is due. And we actually have, I'm gonna say, an on-time payroll. So if we work this two weeks, that's the two weeks that we actually get paid for. Versus why in normal, in, in other areas or, or other districts, it's often a two weeks arrears, like you get paid for the previous two weeks. So it gives you time to reconcile and think. Our tight turnaround payroll actually has about two to three days to actually balance out process, reconcile, and make sure that people can get paid, and it's not working for our process. There are actual inconsistent rounding practices. Veritime, which is the time, time tracking, rounds the time to a certain decimal point, whereas it's not the same decimal point that they actually worked, or the individual reconciling is not there. So, I really wanted to walk through some of these things, and I know I'm speeding through them, but they're there for you to read. This is just the initial, this is a draft, there's more, their, their final report is gonna outline not just payroll, but the budgeting processes and next steps, there's gonna be flow charts. One of the key things that we saw in terms of the payroll processes and including policies and procedures is we don't have set policies and procedures in place for how payroll is conducted. So if one person leaves and we're kinda left in a lurch. We also have recommendations to develop a structure to look at our HR and payroll processes and how they align. So both, so today, this was actually presented to the HR division and the payer, and the whole, and the budget office, the payroll section at the budget office. Talking about what are the recommendations? If an employee goes out on, on FMLA, there has to be something notifying payroll that they're back, you know, or what that timeframe is, that communication is, has not been clearly happening. So, the team today talked about how do we fill the gaps based on these recommendations. There is incomplete time cards. We've seen where individuals may not punch in in Veritime or may have forgotten to punch in because they came to work late. And then payroll is closed and then they're sending an email saying, hey, can you punch me in at this time? That's not the role of payroll, and the reconciliation should happen at the school, under the school leadership before it moves forward to payroll. So a lot of these things, password safety in terms of access to, to things and passwords being open. Now, one of the things that happened with this was that they initially asked for things virtually and started to do virtual interviews. And then they came on site. And when they came on site, basically, they saw some of the things that, that are, a lot of the things that are happening as they observed the process take place. So these are also mostly based on the onsite observations of the process. I know that there's gonna be more conversations or questions as you read through more deeply. But there are some things that we really need to consider as we move forward in fixing our financial processes. In terms of moderate risk, some of the areas are system inaccuracies, again, the rounding practices. There is an, a way to create vacant positions in terms of teachers going in and creating long-term subpositions, which creates a vacant position, but then there's no tieback. And it also doesn't match the amount of hours in terms of, it's, it's a thing that's, that's happening that they pulled forward and we discussed today. So what, what, what this has done, again, has opened our eyes in terms of what are some things that we need to address? And I'm using all of these different audits of the areas, all of the different datas to kinda pull together my entry findings and have, and present that is now what are the strategies that we're going to use to address these areas? So I do want to make sure that we look and clarify. And so I'll give you some time, but this is a part of the update and we'll circle back as the final report comes out. And that is it for me, if anyone has any questions?
Questions? Jennifer?
Now, now, please see, I saw, I saw a post from the MASC that the MSBA approves the middle school roof project. Have you been notified about that? And, and what does that mean?
So, hold on a second. They did not fully approve, I'm gonna pull it up. They approved us to move forward, but there's still an application process and everything. I'll pull it up, one second, I apologize. I'm sorry, MSBA?
MSBA.
MSBA.
Can I ask, Jennifer, where did you see that? I saw it also and then I couldn't remember.
On the MASC Facebook page, October thirtieth. And it's also on the MSBA's, actually, actually, I checked, I checked the MSBA website and it wasn't as clear, but the MASC had a screenshot of the list of districts that were.
Oh, it's, it's on the chair's update, today on the agenda?
Okay, so on, on, no. On, on October thirtieth, we did receive a notification that we were invited, we voted, the MSBA's Board of Directors voted to invite the Amherst-Pelham Regional School District into the accelerated repair program to collaborate with MSBA in conducting a seismic design study at the Amherst Regional Middle School for a potential partial roof replacement project as outlined in the attached board action letter. The board action letter provides the district's commencement date and explains the next steps following its invitation into the ARC. The following documents referenced in the board action letter are also attached, Initial Compliance Certification, Accelerated Repair Program Terms and Conditions, and Maintenance and Capital Planning System Access Request Form. I will assist the district through the prerequisite documents and answer any questions you may have. Completed the prerequisite document should be submitted to me. So this was from Claire Ackerman, our project coordinator. I responded the next day to thirty-first thanking her for this and stating that we will be ready to submit all of our requirements to ensure a smooth process. My understanding was not that we were approved, my understanding was that we were invited to apply. And so, if I misunderstand, I'll reach out to Claire. But in it, it says, I do not want to, I do want to emphasize that this invitation to partner on a schematic design study is not approval of a project, but is strictly an invitation to the district to work with MSBA to explore potential solutions to building needs that have been identified. So I didn't wanna bring it forward until we had walked through the process clarified. So that's why we didn't release it. And I also hadn't had the time, my facilities person has been out on leave. And so I have not had the time to sit through and actually rationalize what this is gonna do as a team, what do we need to submit as next steps before presenting it. So, I, I'm not sure who posted it as we were approved, but I read this as it's not a process, so not an approval, but an invitation to work with the district.
Sarah?
I do think it's progress because it's my understanding that this, the region has applied regularly and hasn't, I don't think it ever got this far. So, maybe we have cleared one hurdle, so.
In my meanderings on town, Amherst Town appropriations, there was an authorization to borrow for repair of the medical school roof in twenty nineteen? Is that still, has that been rescinded or is that still?
I think I can answer a little bit from what I remember from a long time ago. But I think that was when, that may have been when we originally applied. So we could borrow the money if we went forward, and they did just last year do some repairs to the roof. So, I don't, I don't think any approval to borrow has been rescinded. This was just, you know, step next and, and finding funding. Any further questions?
Are we gonna go back through this deck once you have more findings? The published ones?
For the, for the finance?
Yes, for the CBIZ stuff you presented.
Yes, so that, I just wanted, I know that I've been saying that we've been going through the internal audit and I just wanted to present some of the initial findings. When the final report is released, I do plan to, to have it and present it to the committee so that you can see what we, what was found.
So we should hold questions until then?
No, I think, I think if you have initial questions, even if there's something, one of the key things that I, I think that the individuals and NIB's been leading this audit process from our office is if there's something that you see that you either need them to expand upon in the report or you need them, it's not clear, they're willing to go back and, and adjust and assess that part.
So I would ask about the performing town of Pelham payroll, that seems interesting. I don't understand that.
Neither do I. But I did ask, we're gonna reach out to the town of Pelham to determine where that is. Based on the history we have from individuals who are in there, apparently this is how it's been for the past twenty-five years or so. And so, again, just, I'm stepping into that to see what it is. I believe one of the concerns that they have and was there was that there is no opportunity to reconcile. It actually just comes in on a spreadsheet and it's like here are the fifteen, because it's fifteen employees.
Not school employees, town employees.
Yes, so yes, the clarity is they, we process the payroll for the town of Pelham.
Sarah?
Yeah, this consultant, I, you may have told us some months ago and I don't recall, if some expertise in municipal payroll or it's school districts or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question about the reconfiguration of the family center. And I'm thinking a little bit like just newly homeless families. I know we're getting a lot of new arrivals from Haiti and then the existing caseload. Like how are people being notified? And if someone were new, who would they reach out to at each school? Like, I'd just love some more details on how that transition is taking place and, and how families are being supported in this change.
So can I say that I think that honestly, the director is having, I'm gonna say, some difficulty with, with some of the transitions? I feel that it's, it's, it's kinda hard in this setting. One of the things that we, I asked for was a set of data. And, you know, around the families that we serve, what are the original programs that we have? What, what, what does it look like? And one of the clear things that was brought to my attention is a lot of the programs that are currently being pushed through the family center are not directly district-sponsored programs. They were actually programs that are, that are sponsored through grants or someone or another entity in partnership, but it wasn't directly district-sponsored, that's one thing. The second thing was that the percentage of parents in terms of the tier three and the supports. My concern was that we've been doing this from what I've seen or what I've asked for a number of years, but our data clearly shows, which we've presented, I think the team has presented the data to the region to every, that our absenteeism rates are not going down. Our students who are the most in need are not receiving those needs. So our students of color, our high needs, our low income students, they're not showing the growth rate that we would need. So we have to address this differently. And so, one, we have more to me school-based in terms of the supports that are at the schools. One employee was actually out on medical leave and has just returned. So that will actually now start to take place and we'll be able to monitor and see that. Three days will be at the elementary, two days will be in the high school. We do have one individual who is supporting families at Pelham. And so, and supporting the Pelham leadership. And so, we're looking at what is that going to progress and how is that gonna move forward? What we're also doing is that we have two centralized employee, we have the director and an administrative assistant that's there. And so, now it's to see how do we actually take those supports and put them in place? The key thing that I need everyone to understand is that all of the families The key thing that I need everyone to understand is that all of the families who come in, it's not, it's not just about the tier-three families, but in my mindset, how do we stop families from being tier-three? How do we, how, how, like, let's stop being reactive, and saying that we're addressing the problem after the problem has, has arisen, and start dealing with it ahead of time, right? And so if we're school-based, if we're providing the school supports and the schools' trainings, then that is the best way for us to start to address it before we get to the point where children are not coming to school. And so it's actually trying to address things ahead of time. The director is still there, Dr. Guevara is still there. Um, she was a point of contact before, and it's my expectation that she remains a point of contact. Um, in terms of those supports, um, her assistant processes those things. Um, in terms of supporting the students, um, she works with the different entities, so I don't see that that conversation is no longer happening. I know there's been rumors, but she's still there unless there's something that I don't know. So, um, you know, she's still, she's still employed at the district, she's still working with the district, so I hope that answers the question.
Just one quick follow-up, so when you're talking about tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, you're talking about the multi-tiered systems of support within each school building? And then integrating this, like, in each specific school, whereas something different as well?
So, I'm gonna say, I'm using the language that was told to me around why the family center was there and why it was structured the way it was, which is that tier-three are the chronically, the severely absent students, the students who are in need of, of support and intervention between them and the schools, and, and making sure that they're coming in. Um, however, I feel like that needs to fit into the multi-tiered system of supports and intervention that's currently in place at the schools, which is the disconnect. Um, the, 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 the reason why school systems exist are to educate children. But there are, one of the things that I've found coming in is a lot of the processes that belong to the schools were sitting at the central office, and a lot of the processes that belong to the central office may have been sitting at the schools. And so it's now trying to find that cohesion, and make sure everyone has their correct roles in place. So whereas there's this, there, there is this intervention and support for these families that are, their children are not coming to school, or they don't feel comfortable, how are we building their comfort level, we're engaging with educators, we're engaging with teachers, we're engaging with principals, if we're doing that separate and apart from the school? We have to do it with the school in tandem.
Thank you, that makes a lot of sense.
No problem, thank you.
It sounds to me like there's more student support than less.
Right, and if the model works, then we have a, we have a model to expand upon, and, and start to build upon to actually see an effect change.
Excellent. Anna?
I have a quick question about payroll.
I do too.
Um, is it your plan, you, you talked about, like, trying to identify a better or a different financial system, sort of like overall, the one that, like, is a little bit more coordinated. Um, it seems like the entire payroll system needs to be replaced with one that can actually do the job.
It needs to talk to each other.
And there's a lot of manual, um, data entry that really needs to, I mean, maybe you have to manually enter the data, but then it just needs to upload to all of the different places that it needs to upload to. But, um, that, so that is part of the plan, is to replace that system with one that actually functions as it's supposed to?
Yes, so right now, there's three systems. There's Munis, which is actually the payroll, there's Aesop, which is the time and attend, the time, like, for leave, like, if you're taking leave, right? And then there's Veritime, which is the ti- the punches, like, where you punch in and you clock it. There, so Veritime, what, what, what would happen is the payroll person would print all of the time sheets on Veritime, and take that and reconcile that, and then enter that into Munis, and then would also look at what was put into Aesop. And then, so it, so, yeah, it's a thing. And so, um, and I'm, I, I do no justice at talking about it, because that's really what was happening. What we need to have, have is one system that feeds, that speaks to each other. Munis has modules that we are not using. Um, and so we are going to work to put those modules in place, which one will be a time and attendance module, where you can punch in, that will go straight into the system, um, you know, it'll, it, it, we just need one. And we're not, we're not using what we have to its, to its capacity, because we have two others that don't speak to the one.
Okay. Thank you very much for all of your update. Um, let's, we have a lot of things, and let's try and get through them. Uh, so first up is the proposed resolution in support of Mass Promise to Invest. Uh, Deb, you spearheaded this.
Hi, thanks very much for, uh, entertaining this. Uh, a lifetime ago, back in May, you and I went to the MSA, MASC Day on the Hill, and met, um, somebody who was doing local activism, and we connected, um, this, with this group who then formed the Mass Promise to Invest in Coalition. Um, it's, he's right here, and I thought maybe he could come speak to their initiative. Um, just a little context, he's an ARHS grad, and a resident of Greenfield, and has been involved in advocacy around, uh, school finance reform for a long time, but working with this group of people, either informally or formally, over the last couple of years. So, one of the things I particularly appreciate, besides a kind of freakish encyclopedic knowledge of school finance and districts, and how much they would get if this happened or that happened, and back in two thousand and seven, this happened, is just a real calm, focused, passion on reaching out and making connections with legislators, and school committees, and anybody who's interested in, in making a difference in the schools. So, um, also during these conversations with various legislatures, some of which I sat in on, it became clear two things. One, charter school reform is very, very sticky. And the idea of either talking about unwrapping charter schools, or just decoupling them from the existing funding structure is almost impossible the way, um, things are structured right now, or the, the, what's happening at the State House. But, this particular initiative is really clever in that it stays way as far away from that as possible, and just says, we're not, we're not questioning charter schools, we're not even asking you to look at the funding formula. All we're saying is, it was initially presented as an experiment, and the state is supporting it, and the state should reimburse, or we're asking the state to reimburse low and moderate income districts for, um, for the sending cost of charter school tuition, and school choice also. Um, and I guess my last little talking point is, it's our only hope. I mean, I, I don't say that lightly, I, I mean, I s- I sort of say it lightly, but um, anybody who's gonna talk about state reform for, um, school aid, um, they, they should take a, the look at the numbers for our district, because that may be years off, if there's interest in doing it. And it'll be a miracle if it ever brings a single dollar to this district, or the Amherst School District, so that's just a fact. And so, um, Jesus, Leva, can you come up and, and give us a little perspective, please? Oh, and I just wanna present, um, a petition that Kathleen Mitchell put together, and it does have a hundred and seventy-six signatures, and that is included in the packet.
Hello?
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, um, my name is Jesus Leva, and I'm a resident of Greenfield, Massachusetts. Um, I graduated here from Amherst Regional High School, and, um, also actually grew up in Northampton, um, and went to the middle school there. Um, I am here to answer any questions that you might have about, um, this resolution as it relates to Greenfield, uh, to Amherst, um, Pelham and the Amherst, uh, School District's, um, school funding. Um, but I wanted to just very quickly go over some, um, ideas about both trying to look at legislative reform, and also specific to, uh, Amherst's place in, um, in the school funding formula. Legislators at the state level review, uh, six thousand bills in a two-year legislative session. So, in order to have any hope of getting any of their time or attention, it is imperative that we reach out to other districts, and that we are collectively saying the same thing when we have the opportunity to get in a room with them. Um, so that, that's the first thing that I wanna emphasize. Um, the, the, the second thing that I wanna emphasize is that we're not trying to be anti-charter school. That's not the goal of this. Um, the goal is simply to look at, um, the municipal cost impact of charter school public funding, as the state has set it up on public school districts. In two thousand and sixteen, when the, um, when the state had proposed to expand charter schools, sixty-two percent of voters overwhelmingly, um, voted against it, because they understood how this impacted public school districts. And that sixty-two percent largely came from low and moderate income communities, and it was the wealthier communities that voted in favor of the expansion. Um, so, that's something to keep in mind as we think about this. Um, the Northampton City Council and the Northampton School Committee have, and, um, by resolution, uh, supported this advocacy, as well as the Greenfield School Committee by endorsing a mirror petition. We're hoping that Amherst Pelham Regional and the Associated School Districts will also join us in this advocacy. And I wanna echo what, um, what Deborah Leonard said, is that for Amherst Pelham Regional School District, this is actually one of the few things that you can advocate for at the state level that would actually bring meaningful new funding to this school district, because you occupy a very unique position in the school funding. Amherst as a town is considered wealthy by DESI in their calculation, but in per capita income, you rank three hundred and thirty-eight out of three hundred and forty-one for the cities and towns, uh, across the state. So, very near the bottom, next to, um, Holyoke, Springfield, and Lawrence, who by DESI's calculations are the three, uh, school districts with the least ability to fund. Uh, while according to DESI's calculation, you sit next to Northampton in school funding, which is a hundred places above Amherst in per capita income. So, there's a little bit of disconnect in how DESI looks at Amherst's ability to fund versus the reality. And I could go into detail about that, but I, I'm here to answer any of your questions about this resolution and/or the funding.
Thank you very much.
Sarah?
Hi, Jesus, we've been emailing Sarah Marshall.
Oh, hi, nice to meet you in person.
Yes. Um, so I, I admit I'm confused, I've gone to the now, therefore, uh, be it resolved. Because the, the pieces of, the sentences in this don't hang together for me. It's, it calls upon the Commonwealth to correct the inequity by taking financial responsibility for charter school and school choice assessments for low-income and moderate-income school districts. So, okay, um, that doesn't mean complete responsibility, I guess. Says we are asking the Commonwealth to increase state aid to the regional school district by two million dollars annually. And I, I, I assume you mean, like, a flat two million dollars? Like, not increasing, adding another two million dollars every year?
No, no.
Okay, then I might rewrite that a little bit, to increase the annual state aid by two million dollars, not making it two million dollars every year.
Right.
But then it says, by changing the funding formula for school choice tuition and charter, but it doesn't, but you don't need to change the formula, and I thought this is what Deb was saying, it's like, it's too complicated, nobody, there's no political will to change the formulas, so just ask for cash, just ask for the money. So, I, make that make sense.
So, we, I just wanna emphasize that what, this is a grassroots effort. This is several community members, school committee members, and, um, uh, a few town administrators across mostly Western Mass, but also different parts of the state, trying to communicate with each other about this subject. This impacts more, roughly two-thirds of the student enrollment of the entire state. So there is certainly more than enough districts that are self-interested in looking at how this funding works. There is definitely not agreement on how to fix it, or how to address it, and most of these districts are not communicating with each other about it. They're yelling at their own legislators, they're, you know, eh, talking back to their own residents and saying, this is why we can't fund it, but there's not a concentrated effort, or a public-facing effort, to actually coalesce around one particular, um, solution. So, we're trying to frame this as showing the districts the dollar amount that they are actually losing. Um, we're trying to frame this around, um, having a starting point for telling our legislators what we're missing, and then trying to do that as a larger group across many districts, so that we actually have the political capital to negotiate with the legislature on this. Currently, you know, our traditional advocacy organizations like MTA, and MASC, and the MMA, they have, in meetings over the last decade, you know, talked with legislators about this, but haven't gotten anywhere. They don't have enough political capital as it stands to be able to change this, so the resolution served to do that. Um, there are actually other proposals, um, that, um, people in other parts of the state have looked at, there, there's a lot of outcry around this, there's not a lot of cohesiveness. So, more than anything, the importance of doing this is just to put it on record that this is of concern to us.
Tillman?
Um, one, so I fully support what you're doing, and I totally agree that this is one of the few ways that we can increase the, the budget. In the, at the end of the whereas's, it says that it disproportionately affects low-income and moderate-income school districts. Can you explain to me why that's the case, and then I have one more comment?
Um, yeah, I, it, it. It, I'm trying to think of an easy way to say this. Um. There's actually, there's more than one answer to that, unfortunately. Um, those, uh, DESI themselves places a, um, a cap on how much a district can be charged for sending tuition assessments for charter schools. That cap goes from nine percent to eighteen percent if your MCAS scores are in the bottom ten percent of, uh, of districts across the state. So that's one way.
Yep.
Uh, another way is that the lowest-income districts already have the least ability to fund their schools. So, as a, as a result, and this is more relevant to school choice, parents having the option to look at better school districts, look to give their students, their, their, their children the best options. And that's not something that we can fault parents for doing. But what it means is that, um, parents and families who are more socio-economically advantaged are going to be the ones that are looking at charter school or school choice as their options, while, uh, those students of, uh, less affluent families are the ones that are staying in public school districts.
My comment is that I, I would be more in support of the resolution if we phrased it not so much focused on our school district only, but- but in terms of changing the funding formula for public schools in the state, I feel the way it's written right now is very, you know, we need more money. And, you know, this is really a problem for all public schools, and so for that I have a proposed change to one sentence whenever we get to that.
Bridget?
So, yeah, thank you, Jesus, for bringing this. I enjoyed the the other time that I met with you and you went through sort of piece by piece, breaking it down. I, I support this wholeheartedly, and I think it just gets to that core nugget of one thing that you could get many districts across the state to agree to. And also, it points out some of the, like, sort of faulty implementation of the SOA plans. So, like, we're intending to better support the low-income districts and the moderate-income districts, and then urban and rural areas in different ways are getting left behind. But this helps them join together, so I'm, I'm all for it. One thing that I had a question of, as you said, Greenfield, Northampton, and us, I'd love to see like other districts onboard too, and to spread, spread it more more to some of those lower-income districts as well, so we could really have a coalition as we're going forward, and maybe Tillman's language can help with that, but also, like, how can we connect with other districts where that might be important, I think, be something to talk about.
I'm sorry, can you say your name again, sir?
Tillman Wolf.
Tillman Wolf?
Tillman is his first name.
Okay. I, when we wrote, or when we presented this resolution to the various communities, we're presenting it to them in terms of their own dollar amount, so that it's specifically relevant to their community. But we have the intention of reaching out to as many school committees as we can, and we won't succeed otherwise. But I do want to answer, remember Heine?
Bridget.
Bridget. Your question, but it's, in some ways, it's actually important for those moderate-income communities to be at the forefront of the request. Because, and I'm going to explain why. Communities, and we, we have reached out, like, I've actually had a conversation with Councilor Rivera from Holyoke today, and I've also reached out to people that I actually know in Springfield, not necessarily school officials or city officials. But even though low-income communities are very disadvantaged in terms of school funding, in terms of the Chapter Seventy funding, and in terms of the Student Opportunity Act, they receive a large portion of their funding from the state already. And so, it is, there is a sort of self-consciousness about whether they should be asking for more, even if they clearly need it. In the example of Holyoke, Holyoke being one of the poorest school districts, is estimated by DESI to only have an ability to fund its own schools at nineteen percent. So, with, you know, a community like Greenfield being, and let me, let me back up for a second. You can express a community's ability to fund as a percentage, and that's, as a percentage of their foundation budget. So, Holyoke has the ability to fund nineteen percent of its school foundation budget. Greenfield has a forty-three percent ability to fund its foundation budget, while you have communities like Boston that can fund a hundred and twenty-nine percent of their foundation budget, or Cambridge that, according to DESI, has the ability to fund at three hundred and thirty-eight percent. These are, these are based on FY twenty-four numbers. They actually do change. And in fact, a lot of communities, including Amherst, are actually slowly moving upward because of strange parts of the funding formula. So, for example, in FY twenty-four, Amherst was calculated at around eighty percent ability to fund, and they're now at ninety percent. That changes the funding too. It's a reflection of gentrification as a factor, and income is part of the calculation for funding. So, DESI weighs both the total amount of taxable property in a community, as well as the total income of all the residents of the community. But income can change without prop, without new growth and property. So, and that frequently happens when a community raises property taxes in order to support their public services when they can't, and for the less affluent people in that community, they move out because they can no longer afford the cost of living in the community, and higher-income people move in. That, in fact, shifts the calculation, you know, that DESI makes about the wealth of the community without any change in the actual property taxation, which is where you derive the income to fund public services.
I just wanted to say that my question notwithstanding, I'm on board with anything that might get us some help, so thank you for doing this.
Sorry, I got a little lost in the narrative. So, Holyoke gets ninety percent of its funding from the state because of its relatively low ability to fund itself. And so, even while it has, you know, thirteen million dollar in charter school sending tuitions against its twelve million dollar ability to fund its own district, it's they receive so much of their support from the state that I think that they're afraid of being at the forefront of a movement to ask for more funding.
So, I I changed that sentence that Sarah was questioning with an edit that Tillman suggested, and I shared the document with you. Or maybe I didn't try that again. No, yeah, I did.
May I say something to the editor?
Absolutely.
So, would I remove this to two million dollars specifically because that changes from year to year? And I think what we're asking the state is to not deduct any funds for, for school choice or charter schools from state aid for all public schools, and so that's the rephrasing here.
So.
I know.
Could I, should I read it while we're?
Yep, I'm trying. It's just, just, you know, pokey.
That's hard to see.
It'll get better.
It has to warm up.
And it's paged down.
You know what would be good if, what you described in terms of the way that our, way we are able to afford, how DESI and the state looks at us, how that's related to the, to new growth and housing and wages, is not really clearly understood by people in the town. And that needs to be illuminated. And if you could, my name is Irv Rose, and if you need my contact information, I would like to give it to you because I would like for you to send that to me, and indeed, send it to the entire school committee. Well, actually, send it to the entire school committee, because it's, it's a really good explanation that I do not think that a lot of people in the town have grasped.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Deb.
So, I just edited out that we are asking for the Commonwealth to increase state aid, and I added in that second, this paragraph here that, or not paragraph, but this sentence that Tillman suggested. We are asking for the Commonwealth to increase state aid to the Amherst Pelham Regional School District by changing the funding formula for school choice tuition and charter school tuition and not deducting any funds from state aid for public schools for school choice and charter schools. Does that work?
Sarah?
Well, I actually wonder why we're putting school choice into this. I mean, to me, the issue is charter, and I think, I don't know if that overall, we lose money on school choice. We get a lot of separate from charter.
We would, the ideas, it's sort of a package that Mass promises, promised to.
Okay, but, but somebody's saying we do, in fact, lose money on school.
Well, we would still continue to receive the money that we get. It would come from the state, and we would be in revert, we wouldn't have any money deducted. So it would be a net positive.
So, school choice works in reverse, the same way how we receive money from the school district. When someone chooses out, they receive our money. So, we do lose money on school choice. I think the two-point-three that we lose at the region is school choice. It is charter and school choice charter, and I think the special education out of district. But mostly, the charter school tuition out is a two-point, two-point-one million.
Could I maybe speak to the school choice piece a little bit? I'll be brief about it. School choice is actually a very different issue in a lot of ways. And it's also very specifically an issue for the lower-income districts, and specifically low-income districts in Western Mass. Most, most school districts in the eastern part of the state don't really have a substantial amount of school choice, either positive or negative. But school districts that are slightly more affluent in Western Mass facing their own funding crisis as a result, have resorted to school choice as their way of dealing with that funding issue. And while the per pupil funding amount actually increases for low-income districts when they send a student to another district, it's still a net loss of funding. So it does mean that they have to make cuts, you know, to teachers and programming. And the reality is that obviously, the larger amount that's lost for charter schools is more substantial. The school choice is capped at five thousand dollars per student. But what advocates are telling us is that most of the costs associated with the school district are fixed. And unless there is a huge decline or increase in enrollment, they don't, those costs don't really change when you're minus or plus a certain amount of students.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're very knowledgeable about this. Appreciated being in, in meetings with you, having these discussions. Okay, so, oh dear. Any further, yep. Anna?
I was just going to move to approve the resolution.
I second. I second.
Okay, so I have a question on your, your motion. Is it as amended, deleting this line and adding the next line?
Yes.
Yep, you have.
I, at the very end, there's a part about the, all of this being, the, the, the resolution being distributed to the town administrators of Leverett, Pelham, and Chutesbury, but I guess I would take out the Leverett part because you don't have a town administrator. So, at the very end.
We have.
We have a town clerk.
You have a town admin, well, I just looked on the website.
We have a town clerk.
A town clerk.
We have a town clerk.
Well, you.
We have a town clerk, and we have a select board.
And it has the chairs of the select board just not. So, the chairs of the select board of the towns of Leverett, Pelham, and Chutesbury, and just the town administrator of the towns of Leverett and Chutesbury.
And Pelham, we have administrator, we have a clerk, which is administrator, right?
I think.
No.
I think with the clerk. It's there too. It's there too.
Oh, in the, right above.
Go ahead, Deb.
What should I do?
I think we leave it.
Let's leave it. Okay, we're good. All right, thank you.
I think it is not the important piece of all of this.
I agree.
Okay, so we are, your motion includes accepting the deleted line and the added line, so we're going to approve this? Like that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I seconded.
You seconded it. Okay, William?
Discussion?
Any further discussion? Thank you. Yep, go ahead. Okay. Anna?
Aye.
Irv?
Aye.
Deb?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Bridget?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jennifer? And Sarah Bess? Yes. So, we are unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Next up is, oh, well, let's just, here we go. Keep it right up there. Okay. So, this is a draft letter. Sarah, do you want to take?
Sure.
Need on this?
Sure. Yes. So, this is a draft of a letter we can, the region can send, if it so chooses. Amherst School Committee will separately comment and vote on this letter at our, at our meeting a week from today. Let me just say about the timeline, the comment is due no later than December thirteenth. I hope that means on December thirteenth. So, Amherst has only one meeting between now and then. The region, I guess, has, has one additional meeting. So, the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School is asking to expand its enrollment. Of course, twenty-three percent of its students already come from Amherst and Amherst Pelham Regional. And we are all well aware of the, the financial impact of, of losing students to charter, to that school, or any charter school. This is not a criticism of parental decisions, or even of the charter school. They didn't create the funding formula. It's not, it's not their fault. But the fact that it is such an expensive charge to us means that we have an interest. I think we have an interest in urging the commissioner to deny the expanded enrollment request if we can, can make an argument that does not depend on the money, because they don't worry. That's not something the commissioner worries about. So, this is, this draft letter, and thank you to Tillman and Bridget, and Deb's pointed us to some data, databases. This letter is modeled on one that the region sent six years ago, seven years ago, to oppose the previous request by the, this charter school to expand its enrollment. And it was turned down at that time. So, I hope you've had time to read it. There's a lot of data here. Open the floor to comment.
William?
I agree with what you've written. Thank you for taking the time to do this. I would just say, can we add Pelham to it, and can we take that to Pelham School Committee? Since you have two, many's already on here.
I know, Margaret asked me about this. Somebody here would have to add that information.
Right, I just meant, we already have Amherst on here and the region on here, so why not try to ask all three districts to see if they would look at it?
That's fine, but I would think Pelham would want to add data from the Pelham Elementary School, and that's not in here.
I saw data on here from Pelham, I thought, on one of the charts, because it said Pelham. That was the percentage of students with disabilities, I saw Pelham on here, on that portion.
Okay. Well, it is completely fine with me if Pelham also wishes to sign it. I guess, I guess all I'm saying is if you would want to have additional information about, you know, the cost of Pelham or anything that's Pelham more, you would need to add that very soon.
I guess in the future, we should maybe look at all three districts if we're doing initiatives like this, is what I would recommend.
Yep. Um, I just wanna add that, um, Senator Comerford and Representatives Blaze and Dome have also issued a letter, also requesting that, uh, you know, with the same recommendation, basically. And in light of expediency, maybe the best thing would be that Pelham could just write a separate letter that simply endorses this one because I'm worried that we're gonna run out of time.
Running out of time. Yep, we can take that back to Pelham. Yeah, uh, Anna?
Is this relevant for Chutesbury?
I don't know.
I don't even know if we have any kids that go to Chinese immersion. But it seems like charter schools in general, I mean, this is specifically about this particular school's petition. So if we don't have any children that are going there, then it seems bad for us to add our name. But if we do have children going there, then I would advocate sending our name.
Give me five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I think we also probably can't talk about the, yep.
I would say because it's a regional, and this is the region, and the region includes the four towns, think of it from that perspective versus thinking of it as if a wa- if a child or if a child is not. Just think of it as this is a child that's no longer at the region that serves all four towns.
I mean, it's from arts.
Well.
It is from art. It is from arts.
Yeah. Well, it is speaking specifically to the, look at the first paragraph. The Amherst Pelham Regional and Amherst School Committees ask you to deny the request. Okay, we, in the Amherst School Committee will also be addressing this, so. So it is specifically from two committees and not five, so.
I do think we can take it back to our elementary school districts if we would like to, to write a letter endorsing this letter. I think that's probably the best way to move this forward. Yep.
Just one thing, when I look at this, it says the Regional School Committee Resolution Calling for the Commonwealth. And then the first pa- paragraph, uh, says deducted from Amherst Pelham Regional School District.
I think you're looking at a different document.
Yeah, you are.
That's not what we're looking at.
That's mass promise.
Look, look behind you. Look on the screen. We're at item two B, Letter to Desi Regarding Charter School Expansion Request.
Okay.
Till, I, I would just, Tillman, you've suggested that maybe, or we offer to Dr. Z the opportunity to, if she wishes, I don't know, submit her own cover letter of endorsement if you have had the bandwidth to pay any attention to this.
The, the reason I suggested this is that we saw the old letter and that had endorsement from the superintendent at the time. But we, we didn't want you to have to write an entire letter. That's why we thought the easy would be to just say that you endorsed this statement.
I don't mind endorsing the statement at all. I also would say that, uh, after I endorse this statement, I think we also need to create a programming, in, or look at programming in the region. So that once we send this out, we are then making ourselves marketable to keeping our children and our families here. That's, I think, I'm focused on the solution versus the problem. It i- it is a problem because we lose students, but we lose students because we don't have the programming at the region.
Right.
Okay, anything further?
So I didn't hear any, um, changes suggested.
My endorsement.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we just meaning add your name and signature to the bottom. Okay, thank you. So then would somebody move that we?
I moved that we, uh, endorsed the letter with Dr. Z's, uh, additional signature.
Okay, any further discussion? Sarah?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Tillman?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Jennifer? And Sarah Vess, yes.
Thank you.
And thank you to everybody. Worked hard.
Nice work.
Yes. Thank you all very much. I know that was a lot. All right. Next up is Amherst Town Council Financial Indicators Meeting Debrief Follow-Up and next up's, Deb, you gave us a lot of information.
And good thing you told me you wanted it early on Monday because it would have been longer. So I'm, I'm determined not to climb the ladder of inference. So I'm just presenting information, um, but, uh, there's a lot of it. At the end of the fiscal year, there's been a sup- surplus in the town of Amherst for the past however many years. Um, there's a relatively quick process in which that money gets appropriated. And we're right at the edge of it. So the argument about free cash is connected, I'm sorry, the argument about surplus is connected to free cash in a way that I really just don't understand. There's, there was free cash in the free cash account and the surplus goes into it and there might be other funds. But the bottom line is at the end of fiscal year 2024, the town of Amherst has ten million dollars in free cash. Generally speaking, they're gonna leave five million dollars in it and move five billion dollars out of it. It apparently has been the tradition of late for most of it to go into a capital stabilization fund that was formed in 2023, um, with no limit. So generally speaking, good practice is to keep five percent in free cash. Keep five percent in free cash, which is about five million. Keep ten percent in a general stabilization fund, which is about ten million. And those obu- obligations are met with the existing funds. So there's a remaining five million dollars at the end of the year left over that at least a good portion of it has been going into this additional stabilization fund, which is going to be used to build some buildings in town. And other things. Um, it, it seems like for the last as many years as I can remember going back, and I do get the dates muddled. A million dollars of the extra has gone to sidewalk repairs with the argument that the money from the state for that sidewalks and roads is relatively minuscule and that the town needs to step up if we're going to deal with infrastructure. That's in addition to the money that is already in the operating budget put towards capital. What's, I always forget the name of it. There's a capital, cash capital fund that funds all of the capital projects of the town and a very small amount of capital projects for the other sectors, library and schools. And it's not clear to me at all if any of this money goes to the region. So there's a lot of money. There's already been a request to appropriate it a certain way. The question is, can we ask for some of that money? And will we? And what will we do with it? I mean, we would ask for a cer- certain amount. Um, the timeline is kinda, like I said, kinda tight. Um, it's gone to Finance Committee. I believe Finance Committee on Friday said they're gonna hold off on voting on it. Once it gets sent back to the Town Council, they can vote on it once they have a forum, which is scheduled for the eighteenth of this month. So if we request it, will we get it? I don't know, but we certainly won't get any if we don't ask for it.
Irv?
Deb, do you know if when it goes, that when it went to the Finance Committee, if it went for, went to the Finance Committee with already earmarks in it?
Yeah.
It did, all right. So, so, so the Finance Committee will be voting on that, which is already, it has already been sent in terms of earmarks. If we are not among those earmarks, uh, even the region, if we're not among those earmarks, then we obviously are not in line to get any money. However, it would seem to me that since the Finance Committee is getting ready to vote on this at the meeting, that some kind of appeal should be made now. Now, no, I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I mean, I wasn't following this. I wasn't on, on that. Because I do know that in the past, that if you wanted to interrupt this process, you did it before it got to the Finance Committee. I mean, you, you really did have to do it, but.
So the earmarks are requests from the town manager. And Town Council has denied them in the past. There's a particular piece of equipment he's asked for that he, they've said no to. So it's not, and, and again, they're the appropriating authority. They can say yay or nay to whatever they want to say yes or no to. And in particular, um, the town manager was asked on Friday if he had considered reaching out to the region to see if we could use any of the money. And I guess he said he had spoken with Dr. Z but refused to elaborate any further.
We had spoken, um, and I will submit to him when we meet again what was, what he requested and what we can agree upon.
Okay.
Um, the conversation did not focus on the region per se, but, um, we will have a conversation. We did have a conversation.
So the, 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 the bigger picture that is relevant to us is that there seems to be what they call conservative fiscal management process, which, um, a- at the end of these three or four years, they significantly underestimate revenue. And, and, uh, an example of that is underestimating the revenue income. That, you know, they got, they, on the twenty-eight million dollars sitting in the bank, they got, um, in the, in the free cash and capital stabilization, they got one point nine million in investment income. But in terms of their budget, they said that was gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand. So that makes it look like the revenue is a million dollars less than it actually is, which informs the discussion around the budget, which squeezes the region to stay within this four percent guidelines. When there's money, clearly money that they're underestimating deliberately or not, I don't know. But at the end of the day, there's revenues that they're underestimating, expenditures that they're overestimating, and by the end of the year, there's millions of dollars left over. And, you know, that money, as Sarah mentioned on Monday, is not at work in the town. It's just gonna go, five, four million of that is earmarked to go into this capital stabilization fund.
I, you can follow up after the other people who have raised their hand. Speak. Bridgette?
So, yes, I, I mean, my takeaways were really similar. I thought it was pretty striking to see the time, across time, and how the schools were getting five percent less when we went across time. And I think secondly, we've got this very much FBCG, a very big underestimating in certain categories. Um, at this point in the budget cycle, which is leading to these big surpluses. We used to only have a million dollars in surpluses. Now we're looking at four to nine million dollars in surpluses. So I think there's, there's the, like, a strategic approach that's trying to save for these big capital projects in Amherst. But it is coming at the expense of the school budgets. And so that's sort of my, my first takeaway is that when Amherst is crying, we don't have the money, that there are funds there. The second takeaway that I, that comes to mind to me is that I, it's not clear where the process is for the region to be making requests. Of course, we would come to the other towns for their fair percentage as well. But if we need certain things for the region, especially things going forward, I think, um, I was looking at the ten-year capital plan and I'm really distressed by the fact that we're asking for the types of infrastructure related to heating, cooling, et cetera, in fiscal year twenty-nine. When it happens that if we do it by fiscal year twenty-seven, we can get a lot of federal funds to support that and even state funds, but instead, we're gonna come out of pocket for that later. For example, those types of requests in the operating budget, right? Um, could reduce our, our, could, in the capital budget, whether we're going to JCPC or we're making requests to free cash, et cetera, those could reduce our operating costs. And a similar note, the town of Amherst, their IT costs all come out of, um, these particular budgets, the capital budgets. They ask, request them at JCPC. But we put them in our own budget. Where, so then when they're getting three percent, they're getting three percent plus these capital costs for IT. And we're starving our IT department because we've only got the three percent overall. So it just seems to me like there's a lot of work we can do as Amherst folks with our town to be saying, listen, we're paying attention and the schools are important. And reducing by five percent across the last five years isn't appropriate at the same time that all these other costs are going up, inflationary costs and whatnot.
Dr. Z?
I say this with my regional superintendent hat. Because I need for individuals to know that I wear three hats as a superintendent. So I say this with my regional superintendent hat. That what we also need to take into consideration when we sit back and think about how the region is affected, is that there is a lot, because of the placement of regional buildings, that Amherst benefits from. Point in clarity, I had over twenty emails last week. I was out on, um, bereavement, but I know they got a response. I'm trying to resp- I'm gonna respond to them. Stating the upset with a community program around the use of the pool in the middle school. And so there are things that I think that we need to look at in terms of if we are going to make these requests, especially when it comes to capital projects. We have to talk about the benefits of maintaining and how the programs function within the regional buildings and the benefits of both. So I, I do think that there are avenues for the region to step in and make requests, especially when it comes to capitals, um, projects, because it benefits the town of Amherst more than it benefits the other three towns. That is with my regional superintendent hat that I'm saying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Uh, a couple of things. Um, it's my understanding that any, uh, request for appropriation outside the budget first has to go to council and then they decide whether they wanna refer it to Finance Committee. You can't just send something direct to Finance Committee. So I don't think there's any way we can send anything to Finance Committee without it going first through council. My second point is, and this is for the, really for the benefit of the public, if anyone's listening or watching, um, for Amherst residents in particular, Town Council is holding a, the budget public forum next Monday, I guess it is, the eleventh on the eighteenth. Um, that's where you can go and, and lodge a comment or email a comment about if you think that they budget too conservatively and are leaving too much money on the table that could be, um, uh, at work in schools or elsewhere. You could, uh, express that opinion then. Um, and it's important because Town Council adopts, is scheduled to adopt its budget guidelines on December second. And those guidelines are what it sends to the town manager, who is responsible then for creating a draft budget that meets the priorities or the, you know, the limits or whatever that Town Council is setting. So it's, when, when people get upset or have, have strong opinions about the budget in April- So it's, when, when people get upset or have, have strong opinions about the budget in April, that's fine, but this is a really good time to speak to town council, um, if you want more money to be going to the schools.
Thank you, Sarah. Anna?
So, um, specifically referring to the surplus from last year, um, that, you know, we put off a lot of capital expenditures in an effort to show good faith in reducing to overall total ask for this year's budget. And it seems like if we could put some of those capital expenditures, like repairing the, um, parking lot and some other things like that, that we took out because they were not student facing and because they were something that we could feasibly put off until next year or some time in the future, um, that might be a good use of those sort of like surplus funds rather than going into capital stabilization, they could just go to capital. Regarding the overall town budget proposal that's sort of like in the works right now, I was really disappointed in the financial indicators discussion that they had, um, and that I attended virtually. They put together a, I guess it's a proposed draft, suggested budget for the, uh, council to consider that in no way reflected anything that was discussed in the four-town meeting. And I don't know if you know this, but it included a line item for the school, the regional, the regional school district that used a four percent increase over last year's budget to estimate this year's budget and suggested they could only afford a three percent increase over that four percent from last year. And as I think all of us who are actually at that meeting understood, we all walked away from that meeting understanding that all four towns, not just three of us, all four towns suggested that options A or B were the ones that we wanted to look at. And so I am publicly stating that I do not appreciate walking away from that meeting and having people have a complete and total different memory of what they agreed to at the meeting and claiming no remembrance of actually agreeing to what they said they would agree to. So I'm, that's, that's what I learned at that meeting and it was not what I remembered from the financial indicators meeting that I attended.
Irv?
Anna, I mean, this, this is, there's other stuff, Anna, there were no agreements that came out of that meeting, zero agreements. There were statements made by two towns that they preferred options A and B.
I thought all four towns said that they preferred option A and B.
Definitely not.
Is that not your, that's not mine?
Mandy would have had a heart attack in the corner if that would have occurred, it didn't happen.
That was.
Anyway, it didn't occur.
I was surprised and I, I was pleased by that outcome and now apparently.
Didn't occur. That was not, there were no agreements. Anyway, there were, there were preferences for it by two towns for A and B or one, options one and two, by two towns. But there were no general overall agreement that came out of it. Getting back to, um, Deb and, um, Bridgette. All of your information that you have collected is, and your efforts that have gone into that really need to be applauded. What I would like for both of you to do is to, when you have concluded all that information, at the end of, the, end of, the, end of it, there are conclusions. Those conclusions, it should end up in an ask. In asking, here is what these conclusions show that we should be doing or the town should be doing or, or, you know, or the school committee should be doing. Or here's what we're asking in terms of how this money should be appropriated in favor of the regional schools. But there has to be, it has to, has to be an ask, just like at the end of a sales pitch, if you don't ask for the sale, you never get it. So you have to, and, and both of you are, you have incredible information. But every time I hear you, I don't hear the ask, a specific ask. So I, I'm, I'm looking for it. The, the other thing is that this is the time to start looking at how we're going to attack those surpluses, free cash, et cetera, in terms of how we are able to take advantage of it, especially for next year. Now, I do know that I am a part of a group that, uh, that was a standing committee whose time is, has run out. But what we were able to do was to get a standing commitment for X number of dollars to come out of free cash every year. Alright, every year. And, and I believe that if, for the region, it's, it's tricky and complex because it is the region asking the town. But we are part of the region, Amherst is part of the region. But I, I think we just need to, as a school committee, clarify our strategies and tactics in terms of receiving more funds from the town for the region.
Tillman?
Um, so noting that I'm a member of the region but not of the town and noting that there wasn't entire, this, entire agreement on what options the four towns preferred, but there was clear preference by at least my town and I believe two others, um, to go for scenario one or two.
Yes.
Um, my ask to Amherst is to, um, look at their projections and what they're gonna do, what guidance they will provide. And, um, seeing that the projected revenue increase for FY twenty-six is four point six percent, yet the region is currently penciled in for only three percent increase and there's also the problem of the discussion, what is the base? But other things get significantly larger increases, such as the funded capital, which increases twenty-one point eight percent over the previous year. Um, capital that increases twenty-five point three percent over the previous year, miscellaneous that increases eleven point seven percent over the year. So among all the things that are being increased, the schools are among the, the entities that get the smallest increase. And, you know, those priorities do not seem to align with that of the other towns.
Uh, Deb?
So, I feel like it's up to the region to decide what to do, what asks to do. I can present the information, I can say there's money and I think there's a process that's broken, I don't know if it ever was fixed. But the process of earmarking and disappropriating surplus in the form of free cash within the space of three weeks, most, most, most years this year, it's four, with a minimal, um, okay. With the box check that there is a public forum on appropriations outside the operating budget is a big concern, especially as the schools, the library never benefit from those. So if you're talking about the kinds of things Tillman's looking at, the vast majority of surplus slash free cash goes to either the, the sectors of, of the town government that are under Paul's purview or into savings. Plus, all of, we have thirteen million dollars in the operating budget that go to mostly those, um, those sectors as well. There's very little money that goes to the school, schools and almost nothing as far as I can tell that go to the region. So there's the appropriation of free cl- cash slash surplus. There's the cash capital account and, um, I guess there's two, I feel like there's a third. What I found in looking through, um, assessment information is that DESI requires per mass general law that the, oh, both the statutory assessment method for regional schools as well as alternative assessments methods for regional schools not only specify the percentage or the manner in which the operating budget is met, but there's also the member's share of the cost for transportation, capital project debt service, other capital costs and other expenditures. I just found the original, the nineteen fifty-five, I think, original, um, regional, regional agreement. And I haven't had a chance to look at it, but there's a process that we are missing out on in many different a- areas. There's the town allocation of its ca- cash capital. There's, should be an agreement somewhere about appropriating money for, for capital projects that doesn't involve debt authorization. And then there's the surplus, which is again, built on squeezing the towns and not squeezing, squeezing, squeezing the schools, I'm sorry, and not squeezing, as far as I can tell, other sectors of the government.
Okay, so I have Bridgette, Sarah and Irv, and then I would like to move on to our next item. Bridgette.
So the first thing I wanted to say is that what I remember from the four towns meeting is one town counselor, one of twelve, thirteen, I forget how many are, on our counselor, was adamantly opposed.
That was Mandy.
Yes. But one very vocal counselor doesn't outweigh the three others who were there and spoke in favor of option one or two. So I think that Anna's takeaway was not wrong unless you're inside Amherst politics and know that some people hold a little more pull at times, right? Yeah, okay. I've got it. But in terms of asks, as a starting point, I ask for our five percent back. Okay, let's take, let's bring back the five percent that we've lost since two thousand seventeen. Rebalance the ratios in our town more towards the schools. The second thing is maybe in free cash, we could ask for twenty-five percent to the region and twenty-five percent to the elementary and then fifty percent to the town. I, are, is education important in Amherst or not? I guess, I'm not saying those have to be the decisions we come to as a committee, but that's where I'd start.
Sarah Marshall?
I just wanna point out that Amherst did appropriate, I think, eight hundred dollars from free cash for our track and field project. And also, I'm not sure if this addresses part of Deb's concerns, there is a regional capital assessment that each town pays. So it, it's not like Amherst doesn't contribute to our capital needs. There, that's the budget we voted on and then we, like Tillman suggested, we took some money out of that. But, but, um, we do have a separate capital budget and towns are assessed for that.
Irv?
So, um, um, Bridgette and Deb, when I say ask, what I really meant was to put that in a form, put that in a form of a motion to us, the school committee, so that we can act on it. And, and when you do that, put it into a form of a motion, most of you're giving us all the data, et cetera, and then you're asking us.
I got it.
That's, that's what I, that's what I mean. The, the, the second thing is that, um, the, the, uh, when the, um, town ma- manager was going through, uh, the budget the other day and it came up, the whole thing about, uh, what was agreed to, uh, in conversation, in conversation at the four towns. And he addressed it and Mandy addressed it. Mandy addressed it and said, hey, there were no agreements. And she was only referring to, hey, that there, there A and B was from two towns, no one else. She did not, she did not, and nor did other counselors think that there was any kind of agreement that came from that four towns meeting. And, and that's where, and then also, the other thing is that our budget, I know that this has already been discussed for the region and for the town, especially for the region, that, uh, that, uh, when we put our bu- budget in, we're going either opt- option one or option two. Uh, and that, that is something that I know, given all of the, when this came up at, at the, uh, meeting the other day, given all of the body language that I saw, that we were, we're not gonna be fought on this, that we should not back down at all from either option one or option two, at all. And that should be right out front, not next week, week after, a month after. It needs to be out front now. And, and, um, so at the next regional commi- committee meeting, we need to be able and, and be ready to make that an agenda item and to vote on it that what we are going to be putting forward in the budget going fo- fo- forward is either op- option one or option two.
Thank you. Okay, next up, annual report to the town of Amherst for state of the town address.
I can make this really fast.
Excellent.
Okay, the, uh, town of Amherst's charter requires the chair of the Amherst School Committee to present the state of the schools' report. Oh, I hope you, yeah.
Getting there.
Okay, which I need to do in December. So I am showing you, uh, my draft slides that pertain to the region. I'm not asking for approval, I don't think I need approval. Um, Amherst School Committee doesn't even wanna see, see the slides ahead of time. I just invite you to give me any feedback, it doesn't have to be now. Um, it's, it's a look back, really, with a little bit of looking ahead. So what have I forgotten? All the great stuff that happened this year. We spent so much time on budgets and, you know, a lot of things that weren't really highlighting student, at least in my recollection, s- student success and, you know, all the cool things happening in, in the school. So if you can think of anything that should be in here, please let me know.
Excellent.
And soon, 'cause I have to turn this in in a few weeks.
So can I ask if anyone has feedback to email Sarah directly? Is that good? Okay, great, excellent, moving on. Future agenda planning. Is there any immediate? Okay.
I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, sorry, we have policies to bring forward.
Yep, Sarah?
I feel like there might be more to talk about with regard to the schedule. The, the block versus the, you know, the this drop that or the four by four. I mean, we had a presentation, we had some time, but I don't know, I, I still have a lot of concerns, but maybe I just, just should speak to the superintendent.
And I, I would ask that, that if that is to be a future agenda, that not be anytime soon to allow me and my team time to vet the options and walk through what those options may be.
You mean, you're still, you're still working out the possibilities for?
Right, and we would have to present any possible changes to the union, like, so instead of presenting that here, I would like to go through that with the team and, and vet that for us.
Okay.
Tillman?
Uh, I recall it's now or soon that we should be going out to bid for the track project. I, I just, even if the update is that nothing is happening, I would like to know what is, where we are in the schedule.
Perfect. Jennifer? Did you have your hand up?
Um, I feel like ide- I feel like ideally in past years, we have approved the next year's calendar around December. And I, I know that, I know that some families plan their following year, you know, around then, so.
Wait, what?
We'll do it in December.
School calendar.
The school year. School calendar, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, happy down calendar.
Yep. Anything further? Deb?
So I guess I will come with an ask for the region or, uh, request to the town for appropriations, both from fiscal year twenty-four and, um, guidelines for fiscal year twenty-six.
Okay, great.
Point of order real quick.
Yep.
Do we have time to do it at the next meeting?
No, we don't have time.
So do we need to do something now?
So do we need to do something now?
We need to, uh, we don't have time, it's the.
Yep. Sarah?
Free cash, it, there's, it's like, there's this big account with money in it, it doesn't, you could, they can have a request anytime during the year.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think so.
No.
No, they said they're gonna allocate it sometime in the coming month.
They are gonna be allocated.
But they got millions more in reserves.
They're gonna keep them in reserves.
Okay.
Do your best.
Bridgette?
Two things, one, we, we made a request, and Megan's working on it, for the Fiscal Sustainability Committee to meet with Doctor Z, so we could take up that there and maybe that's something we can work out there, and if not, we'll bring it back to y'all.
Great.
That's number one, and number two is, it can be in December, but I need C E A on the agenda at some point.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
School Equity Advisory.
Okay, if there are any agenda items, please feel free to email me. All right, we do have a gift.
Yes.
Jennifer! Read away, my friend.
I would be happy to read the motion for the, yeah, I would be happy to read the motion for the gifts. It's, it's worded a little oddly, I wonder if Doctor Z can, can clarify at all. It's a wonderful gift, ten thousand dollars for the high school program, but then the li- the final line says potential cash total. What is, any, any clarification?
No, but I can get clarity. Um, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's, it, um, my understanding many times when it's like a, either a item that's donated or a, um, a who? Or actual cash, yeah, or actual money, so I haven't seen this prior to it coming to you. So I would need to get clarity on what was actually received. So I'll work on that.
I, I think.
I mean, I'm happy to just make the motion on it tonight and, and maybe you can give us a date another time.
Sure thing.
So I move, I move to accept the following gift from donor anonymous to support high school and middle school ban program, ten thousand dollars for a potential cash total of ten thousand dollars.
Second, I will second it. Sarah Marshall?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Tillman?
Yes.
Deb?
Aye.
Aye.
Anna?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Sarah Beth?
Yes.
So we are unanimous, and thank you to our anonymous donor, that is amazingly generous. Um, okay.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Was it you, Sarah? All right. Uh, Jennifer? William?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Irv?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Tillman?
Hmm, yes.